We ready, Millie? Uh, today, uh, call this meeting in New Shoreham Town Council to order. Uh, today is Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. It is three P M. Uh, today we're going to talk, uh, we've, uh, given time for taxi owners to talk about shuttles and courtesy vehicles, and the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, members of council. I, first of all, want to thank you for accommodating us early this afternoon, um, even though it's a cold windy day, we're here. In, in regards to this matter, the question is, why are we here? And we're here because we have a, uh, situation that is a community situation. It's not one just limited to the thirty-two individuals who own, um, uh, taxi licenses, but it's the whole community. Because we're dealing with a economic policy that was developed by the town years ago with regard to taxi cab operators. And when you go through the history, in nineteen twenty-nine, uh, the state of Rhode Island passed legislation governing taxi cabs. And at that time, in their wisdom, they decided to exempt the town of New Shoreham. And they exempted the town for particular reason, because it's a small community, okay? You have a number of inhabitants that live here year-round, and they wanted those individuals to have some stability with regard to a business that they could operate on the island. And they designated or decided, okay, that's the town, that they wanted thirty-two taxi licenses and two limousine licenses and two bus licenses. And they wanted to control, all right, the operation of those vehicles on the roads of this small island. Now, when they did that, they considered, okay, what are the qualifications? All right, and they set out those qualifications in, uh, in ordinance that they passed, and I'll refer you to, I've give you some documents, I've not, document, I'm gonna say marked them as, as exhibits, one, two, nine. But exhibit one was the exemption that the town received from the, uh, state, uh, state of Rhode Island Legislature. Exhibit two is this ordinance, uh, that was passed at about the time they got the, uh, the exemption. And if you look at exhibit two, and you go to, um, number three, C, it says, the commission, it ref- refers to a commission, that's the Commission on Motor Vehicles for Hire, okay? So it allowed the town to set up a separate commission to govern taxi cabs, limousines, and buses. And it said, the commission had the following duties: to draft and forward regulations for the operation of motor vehicles for hire in the town in keeping with public convenience and necessity, including rates for hiring of such motor vehicles to the town council for its approval. Motor vehicles for hire are further defined as follows: taxis are herein defined as motor vehicles for hire with a seating capacity, including driver, of no more than twelve or the manufacturer's seating specifications, whichever is less, which may pick up or discharge upon solicitation anywhere in the town. And taxis are permitted to provide vehicle tour, tours of Block Island. So a decision was made, we're gonna have this commission, and we're gonna have a number of licenses which they're gonna oversee. And with regard to those licenses, all right, they, uh, specifically stated that, um, there were certain qualifications, and one of them is, is found in section eight dash one sixty-two B, that's on the next page. And it says, no person shall transport passengers for hire in any motor vehicle without first obtaining a new shore taxi, charter bus, or limousine license from the town clerk upon which approval of the town council. So, the first step is, you're gonna apply for a license, and that person's gonna be qualified. And it's the town that owns these thirty-two licenses, plus the other two for the limousines and the other two for the bus charters. And it has to be approved by the town council, and the license shall be visibly displayed on any vehicle for hire at all times, the vehicle is being operated for hire and shall produce upon request of any law, law enforcement official or passenger. Then if you go to eight dash one sixty-three, the thirty-two taxi cab licenses. And then, if you turn to the next page, uh, which is number three, C, it says, only natural persons shall be eligible for the licenses granted on this article. No license shall be granted to a corporation, partnership, or other business entity. So, here comes in the economic thought process with regard to building for these individuals a business that is sustainable. No person shall hold more than one license in any one category, no married couple shall hold more than one license in any one category, license, licenses shall be non-transferable. I presume you all know that there's a long list of people who are waiting for a taxi cab license. Says, a licenses shall be issued for one year, period, beginning on May fifteenth of each year. Applications for renewals of the license shall be received by the town clerk by the fifteenth of each year. Now, with regard to the applicant and the qualifications, which they gotta submit to, first of all, the commission, they have to be a person in good moral character. They must be a resident of the town, okay, for five consecutive years. They must have, the applicant must have been a qualified elector of the town for five consecutive years prior to the application. The applicant must, uh, have a Rhode Island operator's license, chauffeur's license, or a commercial driver's license with appropriate passenger endorsement with a new shore address for five consecutive years. So, once again, I'm talking about the economic purpose behind setting up the taxi cab commission, all right, allowing, uh, the state to give to this town the power to protect not only, um, the people that they are giving these license to and their livelihood, but also making sure that they have available for the community year-round, all right, taxis. All right? So, and, you know, no person here could operate a taxi without the chauffeur's license, which is very important, plus they need liability insurance. Now, what's interesting, the town decided also that it's gonna regulate the rates, what the cab drivers are gonna charge for the services provided. All right? And this includes, and I presume it changes annually, but also includes, you know, uh, taking people around, uh, the island on a tour. Now, with regard to these licenses, they have been passed on for generations, and they're sought after. And with regard to our current situation now, the, the issue really is, okay, we're getting, the, uh, the taxi cap operators and owners are getting competition, uh, from these companies that have come in that operate these large, uh, business operations, but have shuttles that are, are not being operated by a licensed individual who has a chauffeur's license, or have the necessary, um, uh, quite, criteria, okay, to be qualified under the taxi cab, uh, rules and regulations. So, we have a disparity here, and what's happening, you know, and, and there's really no, there's really no argument that, you know, um, that, uh, Champlin's has a shuttle to take its passengers that come there back to the ferry or to the airport. They don't have an argument with, um, uh, the, any, any of the places, uh, on the island with regard to the shuttles, if they're operating a business and it's for legitimate purposes. But what they're doing is, they're, they're advertising these, um, shuttles, okay, as a free service, and they're encouraging people to use them, and as a detriment to the operators of the taxi cabs. Now, what is really happening is, you, you look at situations where you've got five or six designated places where taxi cabs can pick up passengers. You know, we talk about Old Harbor, the Harborside, the Narragansett Hotel, the National Hotel, the airport, and then by custom and practice, you had, uh, Champlin's and the Oar Restaurant. Now, if you look at exhibit number, uh, I believe it's number six. I think it's, we have the photographs of the different areas where they, where you have the taxi cab, um, stops. Nope, I don't have that. Sorry, it's exhibit eight. And, and you, when you look through this, you see these different areas where, you know, the taxi sign, signs, no parking, taxi area, and, uh, what has occurred, and there's been documentation of it, is that the shuttle buses are stopping there, and they're picking up passengers. All right, and they're taking them to different areas around town, all right, different, uh, areas around the island. And, uh, we've come to learn that they've been giving island tour, tours as well, and, transporting, transporting people back and forth to locations that are not their primary locations, like, I mean, where they started from, from Champlin's, Payne's Dock, sixteen sixty-one Spring House Hotel, um, and the like. What, uh, the concern is also, is that these shuttle buses are not regulated, they have about eight of them now running, all right, and there's no limitation being placed on the number that can happen. Next year, there could be sixteen, the following year, there could be twenty-four, who knows? But, it could continue to grow, and it continued to impact the, um, the economic, um, uh, economic relationship that the taxi cab drivers have with the island and the licenses that they hold. So, what they're trying to do, okay, is have this council, all right, take steps to protect their interest. And, and to do that, I mean, I know we're here because of the letter that Sue, um, Millican had sent, and that was back in April fourth of twenty twenty-five, and I, I've attached a copy as exhibit four. But, you know, the, the ask is that they're, they want the town to impose sensible and reasonable rules and regulations to govern the shuttles similar to that that governed them as taxi cab owners and operators. All right, they're not asking for anything more or anything less. And one of the concerns, because they, you know, they're gonna come up and they're gonna tell you what they've observed, we also, uh, retained, uh, Steve O'Donnell and his company to come, come to the island and to observe and to document, you know, what was going on during the summer. I mean, it's a very limited, you know, time he spent here, but certainly they got a lot of, uh, information, you know, when they have operated their taxis, when he's been here, uh, with his, uh, associate and, um, driving around and taking the shuttles, and they learn that, you know, they're doing things that go really beyond what the purposes of a shuttle. If you own a hotel and you wanna provide services for your guests, that's fine. I, I can just tell you one example that I had, I went to St. Bart's last year, and they have similar situations, they don't have any Uber, they don't have any Lyft, okay, they got taxis. And they go so far out there that if I don't take a taxi from the ferry or from the airport, all right, I can't get the hotel to come to me and pick me up. They can't use their, their, uh, their cars, all right, from the hotel, their courtesy cars, to pick us up or drop us off or take us to a restaurant, can't do that. And they did it specifically to protect those people who have, you know, and put time and their lives into holding a license and transporting people around that small island like this small island, all right, for the benefit of everybody here. Okay, so now I'm just gonna turn this over to Steve O'Donnell, he can tell you about his time he spent here during the summer and what he observed.
Good afternoon, everybody here. Um, I'm gonna delve right into what we did, um, all, sure, my name is Steve O'Donnell, I'm the president of Steve O'Donnell Associates. Uh, my background, I've retired law enforcement for thirty-five years. So I'm gonna go into the, the dates that we hear, what Attorney Taro covered, I could cover again, with licensing vehicles for hire, so here's how we saw it. So on June thirtieth, I came out to the island, the request of Tom, um, as his clients requesting to take a look at kind of, um, best practices and how different businesses use transportation services on the island. So we met with several people, interviewed them, they'll explain in their own words what they saw, but what I would tell you, we saw was, we watched, um, the first day we're here was June thirtieth, and we just kinda watched how everything operated, got a lay of the land, and went to Aldo's, went to Champlin's, went to the major, um, locations that we were told were circumventing the rules of transporting customers. So, on, we didn't do anything proactive that day, we just kind of observed and watched and saw, we saw pretty much what you're gonna hear people testify into, people getting in vehicles, nothing we could prove at that time, um, from different taxi stands that weren't using taxis, they were using different shuttles and things like that. But on July eighth, so we observed the Champlin shuttle, specifically a van at Aldo's, that's right in front of a sign that advertises for complimentary shuttle services. From our professional theory, it was confusing to anybody what's free, what's not free, because you see a sign that says complimentary shuttle services. Uh, we spoke to a shuttle operator by the name of Ray, he was transporting, and asked him about transporting us from there to the Payne's Dock. He was with a female associate, I'm not sure connected to the business, but she identified herself as Brooke. They advised my associate on that day, there's no charge for the transportation. Um, they would drop him off at Dead Eye Dix, then they explained how it works in the sense that who works till, um, three o'clock, who comes on and takes over and does the same type of transportation, and what their duties would be. Um, they provided, uh, services from eight to nine, they explained that to us, um, and then this person named Ray gave a number, a telephone number for Rafa, as we later learned was Raphael, who does the same services after three o'clock when Ray's off duty. Provided our, my associate with a cellphone to call for a free shuttle, but he insisted it was free, um, but our associate asked him if he could pay him a fee, and he paid him a five dollar tip for that ride. Again, while he's waiting for return, uh, return transportation, he was approached by a shuttle operator from Aldo's who identified himself as Leo, who inquired if he's gonna rent the moped, I mean, he, he explained he was supposed to pick somebody up with a blue fisherman's hat, um, our worker did not have a blue fisherman's hat, had, he said he was going into town, but at the same time, Ray came back and picked up our, my associate, transported him back to Champlin's for the same five dollar, um, fee that he was a tip, and he made it clear that he was not transporting, that he was not charging a fee. Then, back at Champlin's, our, my associate met with Rafa again, uh, he watched him arrive at other passengers in a separate van, um, then Rafa then transported my associate back to Old Harbor with other customers in the van, paid a five dollar tip, and then he observed the other passengers exchanging cash with Rafa. Uh, my associate came back on the twelfth of July to further this investigation. At ten forty in the morning, he was at Payne's Dock, and he asked the shuttle driver to transport him to the Manassas Hotel. The female driver identified herself as Kim, um, did not inquire anything of where he was staying or anything more about, just hop in, I'll give you a ride. He asked for return, if she returned, I'm sorry, if she asked him, um, if he needed transportation back, he said yes, and he gave her a business card. Um, he did ask her to take her to Northern Light, and, um, she declined, said a taxi could do that, that she doesn't go that far. After the ride to the Manassas, Kim advised there was no charge for the transportation, and offered a tip, and she accepted a five dollar tip from my associate. The associate then walked to the Spring House and waited on a bench where the shuttle marked, quote, "the inn," unquote, was parked. He asked an employee if he'd get a ride to the Oar. The employee did not inquire if the associate was staying in the hotel or not, employee advised that he couldn't take him to the Oar, but he could take him to town. This employee transported him in his van to the, um, ferry in town and accepted a five dollar tip. My associate then walked to Aldo's and inquired about renting a moped, he was told by the employee the price for a moped, and if he rented one, um, a van or a bus would take him to get the moped for free. Uh, my associate again inquired if it's free, and he said, yes, if you rent from a moped from Aldo's, you get a free shuttle, shuttle to and from anywhere on the island. So in furtherance this, I checked the internet on Aldo's, Champlin's, Payne's, Spring House, all have advertising on the web, um, very clearly, except for Aldo's, that it's a shuttle provider for guest only, and that you have to be a guest there. What we found was, what their policy is, is not their practice, their practice is completely opposite. So for the short time, a period that we were there, um, we observed shuttle service being operated again by Champlin, Aldo's, Payne's Dock, and Spring House, transporting customers for compensation, compensation. Although payments for tips, as they described, most of the drivers explained that the shuttle service was free, um, this would appear from my perception as a, in direct violation of the below section, motor vehicle hire that Mr. Taro explained earlier. Also of note, um, the indirect or direct services, um, in at least Champlin, um, advertises, and they charge a fee, but the indirect fee of having a shuttle service taking someone to and from the hotel hotel, I think Attorney Taro explained, nobody has an issue here that we represent. It's the in-between where they're bouncing customers from different places which cause substantial increase, income deprivation to our clients. Again, these are snapshot of what transpired while we're here, but we could, if we could be out every day, it's gonna, it would continue to happen. Um, I believe what they're asking for is some type of sensibility to make sure that somebody is not operating outside the rules. The rules that promulgated by this commission, um, in the town are pretty clear about the safety. Federal motor carrier rules, I know Block Island has different, but the safety of people and those passengers, seat belts, the proper person driving, that person has some checks and balances with their company, make sure you get the right people driving them. I think also, um, the companies that own these shuttles incur some type of liability of putting people in a van that aren't customers, particularly of theirs, um, and some of these drivers either are making money and have no way of knowing if any of that money goes back to the owners of those corporations, or if that's just extra money they make. But it's a substantial amount of money that in talking to the taxi drivers, hundreds of dollars a day that they're losing that. And, um, to close, Mr. Taro mentioned that this town saw a fit that there be thirty-two taxi licenses for a reason. And so, from our perspective of watching it, it was really an active environment down on the main street. While we were here, the day I was here, I saw three accidents that happened with mopeds, most of them that mopeds people couldn't handle, the power of the mopeds, they fall down, but, uh, to much to my surprise, nobody stopped to help. Once we get out of our van and help pick them up and put them back on mopeds, those things are reported as accidents, but I'm sure you know, that happens all the time. And then somebody in a registered taxi that has to go through, um, rules and regulation, it's just more safer environment, not just for car accidents, but, uh, who's in there? The close-on Uber and, and other job, um, services don't operate here, but what they do is they screen the people involved. If you watch nationally, If you watch nationally, there's some national conversations going on about Uber drivers and sexual assaults and preying on passengers. That's not something you really want here. So I believe we're a little bit ahead of the curve here trying to police who's driving people around the island. That's all, and if you have any questions, you're welcome. Thank you.
Sue Milliken. Basically, we're just asking for... What? Oh, I did, Sue Milliken. Basically, we're just asking for regulations because it's pretty much out of control. There's, anybody can have a shuttle, you can drive them anywhere, you can do anything. There's just, we kind of want a level playing field. Like they, you know, you should know who's driving them. You should know if they have insurance, if their car is registered. And there should be, you know, they shouldn't be like going to the store and getting a call to go somewhere else. They're doing what taxis are doing. And basically, that's what we're asking for. Everybody's got a story. I mean, one of the vans was, had milk cartons putting people sitting in the back of the milk cartons. I mean, they were there, I saw it, they did it, you know, just, there should be some. And I would think the town would want to regulate what's going on. I mean, there's, I mean, how many, one guy has three shuttles, you know, next year they might have five. You know, the T-shirt shop might have shuttles. There's no reason why they can't. There's no reason why I can't throw a van on and drive around and do free rides. I mean, anybody can do it. So it's pretty much out of control. And that's basically what we're hoping the town will want to regulate them. It's pretty cut and dry. I mean, they do say anybody in, you know, motor vehicles in the town of New Shoreham that take compensation fall under the ruling. So why don't they? Tips of compensation. Champlin's is charging for the fee, for the shuttle. It's a $30, I don't know, some kind of fee. But the pool and the shuttle, that's all involved in it. So that's kind of a motor vehicle for hire, isn't it? Anyway, that's basically.
Sam's Payne with Payne's Dock. I have a shuttle, obviously. I've had it for a few years. My main purpose of buying the shuttle was to alleviate the wonderful parking problem we have down at the dock. And it did work. We lost probably about, estimate about 10 cars. And I also wanted to provide a service for my customers. And the first year was a learning curve, obviously. I let, we had three drivers, I let them do whatever they wanted to do with the customers. I was approached by a couple of taxicab drivers and they had asked me to kind of regulate that a little bit. Don't do North Light, don't do Southeast Light, don't do the other random stops that they did. So I pretty much limited now, over the years, to only town, the marinas, airport and restaurants. So Spring House, Atlantic are technically in town, but they want to go to those two restaurants. I'm going to take them there. All of my drivers have chauffeur's licenses. I learned that after the first year. So all of them have chauffeur's licenses. The car is inspected, the car is registered, the car is insured for the purpose of what I'm using it for. And my whole thing is to try to eliminate cars at the dock. And on the island, really, I think there's a major problem with that. And I think that me providing a service to my customers, which they are supposed to be staying at the dock or be customers of the bar per se. I try to tell the drivers not to pick up people in town that are just headed for the bar. They have to be customers of the dock, meaning have a boat at the dock. Sometimes that falls through the cracks. Maybe they don't ask a question properly every single time or whatever. But that's what the intention of this shuttle is for. And not for any other reason, not to put a taxicab out of driver, out of business, not to take business away, but to promote my business. And I'm a business owner too. I'm trying to make my customers happy. And honestly, they are going to bring a car out if I don't have a shuttle because they're not going to get in the cab every single night they go out for dinner and spend hundreds of dollars and spend another $40 round trip to go to town. They're going to use their own car. So I'm trying to provide that service and eliminate some cars. And every year I send out an email or a text message to all the seasonal people at the dock or people that come a lot. And I say, guys, try not to bring your car. I have a shuttle and we can make it work. So that's, that's why we have it.
John Cullen, and I am a taxi owner. And I just have a couple of points, I'll try to be brief. Some of this may be sort of redundant, but talk about like trust and safety. Our visitors are trusting the local government and the transportation industry here to provide a safe mode of transportation. Safe in both the vehicle they're traveling in and the person who's driving it. Every taxi driver here has to have a criminal background check. We need a chauffeur's license. Our vehicles are inspected every year before the town will issue our license. And those requirements help ensure the safety that our visitors are trusting us to provide them. Right now, the courtesy vehicles have no requirements or regulations of any kind. And we're not saying that the courtesy shuttles should be banned, but they need to be regulated and need to provide their passengers with a safe mode of transportation, just like the taxis do. And I think what we're asking for is not unreasonable. We need clearly defined regulations about what can the taxis do and what can the shuttles do. And I will say, I've spoken to Sam's and I think he wants to work with us. And I think it's admirable, the things that he just said. Problem is not everybody's going to do the same thing. So it doesn't seem unreasonable to say, here's what you guys can do and here's what you guys can do. And if we have that information and those regulations, we can all kind of move on and come up with a solution that everybody could live with. And that's it. Thank you.
How you doing? Jimmy McCabe. Good. You know, other than just having a gut feeling that this sort of thing will inevitably lead to some hostilities on the road where, you know, people, you know, having free service next to where you have to charge and we have pickups involved and whatnot, where, you know, cab drivers are going to destinations. Then the person finds out, oh, I can just say, I don't want you, after I bothered you to come across the island, I'm going to go for the free ride. So there will be inevitably, you know, some hostile feelings coming along, this sort of thing. But what I'd like to suggest, and I've wanted to suggest it for a long time, is that the town should get rid of the archaic ordinance that says no parking lots legally can be allowed and communicate to the Mott family that you'd be willing to work with them to create new harbor parking. And Payne's Dock won't have to worry about it. All the people who live on Block Island that park there, I know I do once in a while. But you also, what you would have, which I think the police would love, is a place to take illegally parked cars. And if you have a horrific accident, a spot in there where you have a secure lot where you can preserve that evidence without side of the view of the public. And I think if you would talk with the Mott family, they'd see the wisdom of the idea of having new harbor parking and have the lot directly across from where Mr. Lacoste is doing his boat service, which is the most dangerous stretch of road on Block Island in the summertime. It's a miracle that some little kid on a bicycle hasn't been crushed between, you know, a truck and boats and trailers and cars parked and trucks parked on the side of the road there. Instead, you'd have new harbor parking right there, just over to the side, further into that field. It's terra firma, it's not a swamp. That could be easily tightened up to provide a parking lot and have new harbor parking right there, where now you have a place to take cars, which I'm sure would alleviate a lot of the parking at Interstate where people just don't know where to leave their car when they go on the mainland. You'd have a place where you could say, yeah, I'll leave my car there for a week or two weeks or whatever and have a paid parking lot. And a place, like I say, where when illegally parked cars are parked around the island, somewhere they can be taken and put somewhere saying, no, you can't just park in the street. You can, you know, and that's a no parking spot. No, it's a dangerous place to park. You can't just leave your car there and take it to that. You know, and have a paid parking lot on Block Island, New Harbor, New Harbor Parking. Idea I've had for a while. Fred Leder, live on Beacon Hill. I've been on Block Island for about 42 years. One thing, it took me 16 years from the time of application to I actually got the cab. But that's really not the point I'm here to make, which is simply, if I were to fly in to TF Green and hop on the Holiday Inn Shuttle, they would take me to Holiday Inn, not to some restaurant nearby and then pick me up later. You know, to me, a shuttle goes from point A to point B. No stops. You know, if I want to go from Holiday Inn to the airport, okay, I'll wait and they take me to the airport. But, you know, oh, I want to stop here and get some cigarettes. I want to go and, you know, go visit my friend at this place or that. So that's, I think, something that needs to be addressed is, what's a shuttle? And that's all I got.
Judy Clark. Basically, it's all been said. And the important thing that we are concerned about is having, like you delineate between what the bus can do, what a limousine can do and what a taxi can do. And I feel that the shuttles are being compensated and that they fall under the jurisdiction of the town of New Shoreham because they are being compensated one way or another, whether it be tips, whether they're getting paid to drive it. However, the compensation is indirect or direct. It is happening and you should have the right to make rules about those vehicles that are operating in that way. We'd also like to try to see if we can get legislation as well. For, I mean, the whole state of Rhode Island seems to be operating courtesy vehicles in ways that are not supposed to be. And so I don't know what we can do, but if we could get our people upstate to help us with legislation in restricting what shuttles can do, that would be very helpful. And we have lost a lot of money because of what's going on.
One quick thing. In order to, Russ, to get a license, we have to, as we spoke earlier about, you know, living here for at least five years and tax returns. Keyword being living here. You know, in order to maintain my license, I have to be domiciled, live here nine months out of the year. I can't, I can take three months off the island. This would be, would be, would discount for licensees of the shuttle. The owners of the business that runs the shuttle are corporations people. If Champlin's LLC takes a license or is, and the Champlin's LLC live here. So that's something that just popped into my head is, you know, licensees registration. And perhaps the same thing we did. We have the five, you know, five-year residency, tax returns and then the waiting list. So.
Really brief, I'm sorry. We've been talking about this for a couple of years. This is not the first time we've been here. It's been over two years and we've been to multiple meetings. And I think as a group, the taxi owners and drivers felt like we weren't really seeing any results. That's what led us to retain Attorney Taro. And hopefully, because, hopefully the message isn't, oh, it's just those angry taxi drivers again in here trying to, I don't know, cause trouble or whatever. That's really, we felt like we didn't have a choice. But we needed representation because at the meeting a couple of years ago, other people who had shuttles showed up with attorneys and we didn't. And that's, you know, we're not trying to be combative, we want to work together. But at great expense, also, I might add, that we just felt like we had no choice but to hire legal counsel. That's what brought us to these guys. And there.
One last comment. Sam's Payne again. My drivers are not compensated. I don't pay them. And they do get tips, but come on, we live in a tourist community. Everybody gets tips. Whether you, you know, help somebody on the side of the road, they're going to give you a tip. That's what happens. I've been pumping gas for nine days or eight days and I'm getting tips pumping gas. I've never tipped a gas guy in my life. So, but it happens here. Like, it's a strange phenomenon. We live in a tourist community and that's what's going to happen. You're going to get tipped no matter what you're doing. The taxicabs get tipped and they're owners of the business and they get tipped. Technically, you're not supposed to tip the owner. I don't get tipped at the dock usually when I tie up a boat, but all the workers do. So.
Other than Payne's Dock, Kathy Payne. The whole idea of corporations taking over Block Island is what I'm afraid of because they don't care that they're taking money out of our pocket. And, I mean, Sands is a corporation too, but, you know, the corporations I'm referring to. So I'm concerned about that. And as far as their business approach goes, are they writing off their cars as a business expense? Spring House has those three, I don't know what they cost, $14,000 apiece. Are they writing those off? Is the big van's being written off? Is his little Dodge caravan being written off? I mean, that makes it a whole different tax liability that they'd be supposed to be paying for. So I'm against corporations taking away the island income.
I'm Amy Doran and I am a courtesy shuttle driver. And I actually drive for Sam's. I always use courtesy as part of what we do, courtesy shuttle. And it is frustrating that people have taken advantage or over, aren't following, being courteous. So I know the people that I work with, we were there from like 11:00 in the morning to maybe 9:30 at night. And oftentimes I'm on the phone, like calling out, like, I can't do this. Like, can you? And always calling for a cab or, hey, someone here needs to get a taxi tour. And like you were saying about parking, there's always that jam going into Payne's Dock. And like, we always try to help to keep that clear for the, put up a sign and say like, hey, stinkers, you can't park your car there. So I think a matter of taxi versus shuttling is, shuttle people need to be respectful and courteous and try to give, do the best we can.
Anybody else? You guys have any questions? Can we, I would like to agenda this so we can have a full conversation with Nick and others around whether there's anything people want to do. It's just the three of us. It's just the three of us because.
Almost two.
Right.
I also would like to explore a little bit what would be legislative and what would be by law.
Well, that's kind of what I thought about Nick. Because it is, that was the challenge, right? I mean, I noticed my, an email that I sent to you, Judy, is in there because we have to, we have to figure out what we can and can't do with our solicitor. But this was, this was very helpful, I thought. And I really appreciate the time, the money, et cetera, that you guys put into this.
I'd also like to see if we couldn't explore what some other towns might do or may not do from that end of it.
Kathy, did you want to comment?
I don't really feel that we should postpone this because I have a letter he wrote to us. He, I don't know if you remember because I write them all the time, but you mentioned in the letter that you had already talked to the town attorney and he told you all, and I think it was a different counselor, that was two years ago, that there's nothing you can do. And so that's not really true. We want a decision tonight. We want to know how you three, because the other two aren't going to vote any. So I don't think we want to postpone this. It's been over two and a half years. And so you told, I have a letter, Sue, this is somewhere, where you already asked that lawyer, I don't know which one it was. We've had so many, but that one that you always see on the TV. And he said that we have, that, he told you, you know what he told you.
Yeah, I told Judy what he told me.
So here's our decision. So we'll turn it around to how do you feel about legislation being made for the taxi drivers through the tax?
I guess, two comments to that question. One is, if we're going to go about drafting an ordinance that says you have to have a chauffeur's license if you're going to, I'm just picking that as an example. We have got to have our solicitor saying, telling us how to do that. So my expectation would be that if the three of us actually want to do an ordinance around a lot of the things you've talked about, we would do that during a meeting with our solicitor. The other, the other question regarding legislation also is critical because there may be some things that we want to do that people would be, a majority of the three of us would be inclined to do, that the solicitor says, in order to be belt and suspenders on that particular one, you should go to the legislature. So we need to know that. I'm, I am not prepared to draft an ordinance today. It's just not at work.
That's what democracy is, is making a decision, arguing in favor.
Just address this, okay? And I understand what you want, but I don't think it's possible, all right, to do it tonight, okay? This afternoon. But with regard to the legislation, all right, there was nothing on the state laws that talk about shuttle service. They talk about jinnies, taxi cabs, so on and so forth, all right? But nothing about shuttles. So the thought that it has to go back to them, okay, is, okay, something you should consider. But I don't see where they've passed a law which now they have to say to you, you're exempt from it. You're a very small island, small community, and you want to protect all the businesses out here. Not only the taxi cab drivers, but Sands' business, all right, Payne's Dock, and all those, you know, businesses related to providing, you know, tourists to come to this island and have a good time during the summer. But you want to make sure that, you know, you make it safe and you follow the rule of law and it's reasonable. The regulations that you're imposing upon them are reasonable regulations. And right now, I don't see where there are any regulations. There's no oversight. So it just could, you know, end up creating more problems down the line if you don't address the issue now. But I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right.
And I just think, you know, we do have to do something now. I mean, this has been a couple of years. I thought, you know, it came like a year and a half or so ago and was resolved with point A to point B and back. And that was it. No stops in between for different things. But obviously, it has increased and not decreased and it's not been regulated, so.
It has decreased. I might have not allowed. Like I used to let them do whatever the heck they wanted to do. And I decreased it because of what they said to me.
Yeah.
Yes.
It has decreased.
I think there's, yeah, and I think there's room for some reasonable regulation. So, you know, we just have to put it together and try to figure it out and have a conversation amongst ourselves about it. But I don't think we're, I don't think we're trying to kick the can down the, anymore. I think it's, we've got to have something by.
And Sands, you're basically doing what we're saying, so we're not.
But the problem is, the problem is when regulations starts happening, you guys are going to limit it to those three suggestions that Kathy and Sue put in their letter, which is completely unfair. Because there are restaurants, like I said, that are outside of town. So I'm going to drive them halfway there and, okay, you got to walk the rest of the way? I mean, I'm going to take them from Payne's Dock to the Spring House or Payne's Dock to the Atlantic or whatever, whatever the restaurants are, wherever they end up being. So I think it should be limited to town and restaurants or business to business is how it should be done. Not just necessarily, you can only go to the ferry at Old Harbor, Champlin's, and the airport. That's ridiculous. Or drop them off by the bathrooms in town. Like, that's also ridiculous. So.
Yeah, I know. It takes a little bit of thought to figure this one out.
All right, Judy.
So when Paul Philippi had his bus and it went from Champlin's to Ballard's, he made a point of only going from Champlin's to Ballard's. Anybody could get on it. All of our kids got on it to go to the pools. And it was, it didn't interfere with our everyday stuff, which is going to restaurants, going to the bluffs, going to all the different places on the island and to the ferries and to the airports as well. But shuttles are, have notoriously been subjected to just going from A to B. Your place of business to your other place of business or somebody else is designated, like those Champlin's van has said, we only go from Champlin's to Aldo's. They don't. They go everywhere. But, so they're already overstepping, as you said. And we need to limit what the shuttles can do. I'm sorry, Sands. But, you know, that a lot of times too, that we've noticed is somebody from Champlin's or from Payne's or from someplace will call us to come and get them. The desk at Champlin's has actually called a cab to come there and you go, you're empty, you go, and your people are getting in their van. Your people are getting in their vans. That you, that called you and they said, oh, no, we didn't call you. I call the number and the person picks up the phone that's getting in the van. So we need to regulate it, as you said.
Thank you, Judy.
One more.
Okay, John.
Time is kind of the essence because I know it's only November, but we're going to blink and it's going to be next spring. And so it would be nice if we had something in place by then. And to Sands' point, I guess that's part of the dialogue of how we arrive at what is the solution that we can all live with. And I don't know that we're going to decide that, obviously, today. But we have an ongoing conversation. But things like this take a long time. And if I, my fear is if we don't get the wheels turning now, it's going to be summertime again and we're going to be dealing, we're going to be back here in a year having the same conversation, which I don't think any of us want to have.
That's why my first request was to mainly to make sure that we agenda this. So.
Do we get a feeling that you think they should be regulated? I mean, is that?
I.
Or you think it should be pre-measured and?
I'd like to get a little more information. We have a definition of a courtesy vehicle. Where does that definition come from? Is it, was it? We don't. I don't mean by ordinance, by state. Is there, is there a reference in, is there a reference in the state as to what a courtesy vehicle is?
Yes, if you're one of them. Courtesy vehicle is for a loaner at a dealership.
Courtesy is probably not the proper word. Shuttle would be the word. The shuttle. And that's, and that definition is by the DMV or is it by business regulations? Where the?
Doesn't have one.
So there's no, there is no, well, we're using this terminology, then it's a made-up terminology then.
I think over folklore, courtesy, I think the message they're sending you is vehicles operating for hire are not really regular. That's kind of what I'm.
So if, take Tasker, if they want to give you a loaner vehicle, for instance, there's no regulation, there's nothing?
No, that's all courtesy. In fact, I'm doing that tomorrow. Tomorrow I go to get my car serviced, they give you courtesy vehicle. Same thing, I have to have my place.
Sorry, courtesy vehicles, I'm going tomorrow. That's a good example. I dropped my car off, they're going to work on it, and I take courtesy vehicle. I have to sign agreements, insurance, license, just like I have now. That's what a courtesy vehicle is, defined. But that requirement, Colonel, is from, is from the dealership, not the state, correct? I don't know if it's a state regulation, but that's what they call in dealership. I think here, they could correct you better. Courtesy vehicle is, it's just a word that's gotten used. But from my experience here, it's the shuttle services that they're talking about. All right. So I guess my question is, is there, I think we need to, Nick or James, need to explore, is there anything within the state that has, if you have a courtesy vehicle, that you have to be above then what the state minimums are for registration and insurance? Is there anything that you need to have? And if so, what would be the agency that requires that? And there may be none, but when you, when. No, but I think you're getting confused with courtesy. Courtesy is unique to dealership, not the word, the shuttles, the vehicles. It's just terminology. I think your point. Let's jump back one to, and I don't have a position on this. I'm trying to gather information. I'm very open-minded. I learned a lot, actually, it was said from everyone in this room. But let's take the Holiday Express. If you go there and they have a shuttle that goes to the airport and comes back, or maybe it will take you to, I don't know, maybe it will take you to work, I don't know. That vehicle itself that they have, just a registered vehicle to the hotel with regular insurance, there is no additional, I think the plate on that is probably a. Usually transit. It'd be transit or jinni. Transit, yeah. So the only stipulations would be what would be to register that, but it wouldn't be. So there's no license that goes with that, that I'm aware of. I think that's one of the charges you're going to have to come up with because we were researching all of it. I think the main piece was vehicle for hire. And so they're compensated directly or indirectly. That was kind of the contention, that if you're paying a fee to stay in that hotel, I think it was Sands that even mentioned that they're providing a service to their customers what they want to do. It's just, I think, the group here is trying to, how do we regulate that so it's not impacting everybody? They want to play in the same sandbox as everybody else, but they want to make sure they're treated fairly, that's all. Thank you.
As far as I know, that I've looked into, there are no shuttles. Shuttles do not have any regulations whatsoever. The only regulations are put on things are if they're compensated. Then if somebody is being compensated directly or indirectly according to our ordinance, that opens it up to any kind of, you're getting paid to drive, you're making tips, you're paying extra at the dock to be able to use the service. That's all compensation there. If I give you a hamburger and you're driving, that's compensation. So the only regulations on shuttles would be if they are being compensated. And we can regulate them if they are being compensated on Block Island. We can regulate them, as far as I know.
Terry Mooney. We all remember, many of us remember back in the days of Naragansett and the Spring House, having vans going down to the beach house and picking up people at quarter or four and taking them to the boat. So vans and shuttles have been part of Block Island for a long period of time. But we're looking at a group of people who are driving taxis, who own taxis, and this is their living. And there has to be something done to make sure that the shuttles are not interfering with their ability to make a living. It's critical for Block Island. And there has to be something that can be done by the council to make that a permanent thing.
Thank you, Terry.
And we go back to, and the scope of it. I mean, it was an easy issue when it was the shuttle or the bus, whatever you call it, when Paul Philippi would take his customers from his marina to his restaurant.
We had any problem.
And he wasn't going to someone else's restaurant. You were going to Ballard's if it was, you know, on his bus. But if we're talking about expanding that.
People who are picking up along the way and dropping off along the way in those shuttles right now.
So that's something, that's a twist that, yeah, that we have to, we have to deal with somehow.
And I think the parameters can be defined. I'm not 100% sure. And I'd like to have it from our attorneys. There's some research whether that's legislatively or whether it's just by local ordinance. And I do think that there's some room between what's been said here. I don't think it's that far apart. So. Horses, Tim, that's what we need. We need horses.
Well, yes, you do. And I gave you horses for a long time. I gave you all form of transportation with them. But, you know, I've had a cab since 1983. And to maintain that, you know, to be a cab driver on Block Island and have, you know, all the criteria of that, you know, providing a service every year so you can keep the license. And the niche that we have is that, okay, you want to provide a courtesy ride to town? Okay. But if you want the luxury of an island tour or to be taken to specific locations and picked up again, then you get that through a taxi cab. I think in keeping with the spirit of how the state gave Block Island the regulatory power over cabs to make it so that, you know, this would be a sustainable thing for year-round, you know, service, that allowing the cab drivers that niche and having it where, you know, the shuttles can operate, taking people harbor to harbor, like Paul Philippi used to do. But for going to specific locations, like, you know, the bluffs and restaurants are being picked up again, that is a luxury you get when you buy a taxi cab and you contribute to the year-round economy of Block Island by doing so. That's about it. I think if you do regulations, you should put some structure in there for giving the cabs that breathing room to keep being able to afford to exist. So some night when you need a cab at 1:00 in the morning, they're there. You know, and there's, you know, it's a lot to be a cab driver on Block Island. You run the everything, you know, the bad years, you know, you know, where tourism is off, you know. You got to sustain through that and have the service. And the different, everything, I'm dealing with customers, you know, and. But there you go.
Thank you, Tim. All right. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
All those in favoring to get this thing on? Thank you guys so much. This was really helpful.